I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee. It's Tuesday, January 24, 2023, here in the Middle High School Library. If I could ask everybody, please stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I just wanted to introduce the new executive assistant for the school district, Ms. Danielle Gaylor. She replaces Teresa Minahan, as I mentioned last month, three weeks ago, actually. January 3 was Teresa's last meeting, and she'll be here with us. And she'll be retiring end of the month, I think, next week, Tuesdays or last. Okay, so Tuesdays are our days. So Danielle, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Moving on.
Yeah, we talked.
Okay. Let me start this again. Anybody like to speak during hearing of visitors? Please raise your hand. Please state your name and your address.
Hi, Paul Haggy, 515 Summer Street. I'll try to be brief, like maybe another family member. I'd like to just take a moment to, you know, this, I'm not even talking about the discussion about the book, but I would like to point out and acknowledge Chris Coyle for the leadership that he showed throughout that from September through January. It's not an easy job doing what all of you do, and it's even harder being a chairperson of a committee like this when in a very passionate discussion about something that's very personal to a lot of people. And I thought, Chris, you just handled it so well from September through October, when we're in the auditorium, people screaming at you, pointing at you, threatening to sue you. You kept your composure, you were respectful to everybody, you brought them into the discussion. You didn't, I just thought you handled it so well. And a lot of times, you know, when you're in these committees, people don't get recognized. And you did an excellent job throughout. And if we were going to have a vote for, you know, recognizing people in Abington for 2023, you'd get my vote, Chris.
Thank you very much for everything that you've done throughout this.
Thanks, Paul. I appreciate it. Please state your name and address.
Tony DiBono, 98 Temple Street. First, I also want to thank and commend the committee for voting to uphold the superintendent's decision to keep a copy of this book as gay in the library at last month's meeting. And so, as on the official record, I reiterate my call for committee member Happel to be censured regarding the inappropriate comments she made to her fellow committee member last month. I was also deeply troubled by her callous dismissal of providing adjustment counselors to struggling students. Second, it needs to be said aloud that the appeal presented at last month's meeting was unhinged and bigoted. I need to be blunt. These book challenges are part of a militant nationwide insurgency that has been launched by white Christian nationalists. This theocratic movement has come to rely mainly on intimidation and infiltration to weaken our democratic institutions in order to force their moralistic beliefs on the rest of society. For years, they have been intentionally distorting and inventing terms and controversies in order to spread lies, harm their targets, enrage, and recruit the disaffected, and put the rest of us on the defensive. They're not, it's a form of propaganda called semantic infiltration. They're not just asking questions about issues like race and gender. They're intentionally injecting disinformation, fear, and grievance into the community. And their leaders know that book challenges aren't really about protecting children, and they're not advocating for parental rights. Those are Trojan horses, and by agreeing to debate them, we are opening the gates to their lies. So what's it really about? Well, having been raised in the white nationalist, the white Christian nationalist movement, I can tell you that they are desperate to control their children's minds both inside and outside the home. And so, having access to information and stories that positively portray anything other than cis, monogamous heteronormativity is a very real threat to that control. These books are merely proxies. The real target, at the moment anyway, is the queer community. In that, by purging its representation from libraries and curricula, parents believe there will be fewer challenges to their cultish mind control. And if given the chance, they'll happily purge representation of other oppressed groups as well. The solution to this issue is painfully obvious: private religious schooling. But these theocrats feel entitled to claim dominion over the government and want to purge secularism and civil rights as we know it, and conscript public schooling to their fascist crusade.
Our policy allows for three minutes. I've never held anybody to it. I'm just going to have to ask you to wrap it up, though.
Sure, sure. So their next target is civil rights flags. But we mustn't debate their lies. Flags aren't inherently political, any more than signs are inherently traffic-related. We're talking about the freedom to display symbols that affirm human rights and dignity at a time when Nazis are marching in Boston, our children's hospital is receiving bomb threats, and the cruelty directed at the trans community has literally reached exterminationist levels. And anyone that regards or misrepresents human rights and dignity as strictly political is not only deeply broken, but also extremely dangerous. Thank you.
Good, Mr. Bono. Would anybody else like to speak during public comment? Okay, I'm going to close the hearing of visitors, part of the agenda.
Chris, may I speak?
Yes.
So I just wanted to address the last meeting and respond to comments I've heard as well. Julie, I do apologize to you for the last remark I made before the recess. It actually wasn't meant for you, and it was mis- mis- aimed at you. I was under the weather, day four of the flu-medicated, and was already shocked by much of what transpired from the end of Ms. Baldner's speech leading up to my comments. For those that don't know, Ms. Baldner was a scheduled, had a scheduled spot on our agenda, which was a hearing to discuss this book as gay. Based on Section KEC of the policy we have in place, a parent may object to material we have in our schools. If that happens, the superintendent forms a reconsideration committee to review said material. If the decision doesn't satisfy the person requesting the evaluation, it then comes to the school committee for a special hearing. This is clearly written in our Abington School Committee manual. Also, if you refer to our School Committee Policy Manual, it states in Section B2, "School Committee Powers and Duties," Number 2 appraisal states, "We are responsible for evaluating the effectiveness of its policies and their implementation." One of our members stated that the school committee's responsibility is budget and policy and budget. I agree wholeheartedly, and it is stated throughout our policy manual. That hearing was part of our policy. I feel that Mrs. Baldner wasn't taken seriously, her thoughts and feelings were dismissed, and the fact that the discussion was even taking place was a burden to some. The age of sexual consent was brought up. We all know consent is 16. However, we have 14 and 15-year-olds in our high school, not to mention that our high school and middle school are combined, so essentially, we have 10-year-olds here. But keeping on the high school age level, there are children younger than 16 that are able to access this book at any time. We should take them, their parents, into consideration when placing this book in our high school library. This issue will be discussed in an upcoming policy meeting and presented to the school committee for a vote, which is the reason I was 50/50 on the decision to keep the book or not in the high school side of the library. I felt that if I had no, that I, oh, sorry. I felt that if I had taken away from those above the legal age of consent, and if I said yes, it would give children the opportunity to see things that they may not be ready for, and their parents may not be ready for them to see or read about. Respect for our children, their bodies, their sexuality, libido, and to their parents should be just as important to all. One other reason I was 50/50 is because I'm trying to compromise and would like stipulations on some of our books, and the only way to achieve that is by creating a policy that fits both sides. I need to consider the possibility of members of this committee denying a book policy in the future based on the vote that I made at the last meeting. During Mrs. Baldner's hearing, a parent was able to speak from the audience. This did not seem right to me, as he had the ability to speak his mind during the Hearing of Visitors section at the podium, instead, he was given the opportunity to speak during Mrs. Baldner's special hearing. Chris and I spoke about this after the fact. We are not experts in being committee chairs, so I understand that Tony's speaking got away from him. However, while trying to respond to Tony, I was continuously interrupted by him. Tony stated he read the book, and it was delightful. He said, "It is not a book on how to have sex. It is an acknowledgement of what the reality is for children." When I told him I don't understand why he thinks every child is sexual, he interrupted me before I could finish, basically stating he won't stand for what I'm saying. Since I couldn't finish my statement, then, I'd like to make my point. All children are not sexual. Children is defined by being under the age of puberty. Some members of this committee, and the parent who spoke to this book, use the word children when referencing the viewership. Teens or young adults should be the wording used. For anyone that has actually read the book, you would understand that the word children sounds dirty and creepy when the book references how to give handies, blowies, bummings, and use lube, how to use fingers, give oral, use toys and strap-ons, as well as role-playing. Another reason why I was upset during the meeting is because no one could see this person's shirt, which stated basically that, I think he was calling me a bigot, fascist, and LGBTQ, anti-LGBTQ. The bottom line for me is, since serving on this committee since 2015, I've never interrupted any member of this school committee. I've listened to you all speak, I've listened to other parents speak, I've never scolded anyone, spoken over, or responded rudely, or been inappropriate until last meeting. While speaking to Peter regarding the location of the book, I was interrupted, maybe because I didn't understand where the book actually was located, because my view showed two different court cases, or because patience was thin. I also was interrupted by the man from the audience that was allowed to speak during someone's hearing, and I was interrupted for the third time in a third meeting by the same school committee member who doesn't like to hear anything I have to say. I'm not fond of anyone that says one thing to one person and another to someone else based on the audience. I'd like to point out and respond to a few parents that have scoffed at my remarks paying for additional adjustment counselors. I've had many conversations with teachers. We have children that don't know how to read and write in the grades where they should know. We have children that walk into class and tell others to suck their D, you-know-what. My opinion is, we need to stop taking children out of the classroom. We need additional pairs in the classroom to help these children learn. We could offer a weekly special that is taught by a counselor for executive functioning and emotional regulation. Kids now are being subjected to technology at home and in the classroom at a younger age, and exp'rsay, technology interferes with behavioral and learning. I'm wondering if behavioral issues in the younger grades are more to do with technology and a lack of structure in a school setting than COVID itself. Just to point out another reason why some of our kids could be behind is, we spent thousands and thousands of dollars on the Wonders program for our students. However, it was dropped almost immediately in all grades except for grade eight. So much money wasted with no accountable program in place. We also spent thousands on PD and offered the same person over and over for our teachers and staff. I don't know why we aren't expanding our horizons with other PD training or saving that money and putting it towards better use for our students instead. Lastly, I'd like to point out that the issues within our school committee started about a year and a half ago. When I was chairperson, I changed the meeting location from our school, which required masks, to other meeting spots that didn't, and that didn't sit well. By moving our meeting, I was giving pairs the choice to attend masked or unmasked, and for the past couple of years, I've been on the other side. I don't believe masking children, handing out COVID vaccines, giving out Vinitx tests, and I've always wanted our students to remain in school. I've been dashed by a member of this committee publicly over and over. However, when a parent wrote on my school committee page back in February of last year, I was asked by some of my fellow members to correct the pair's comments, correct free speech. However, I'm not awarded the same treatment. Attached or direct quotes and references to what I've spoken about, I'd like these included in the minutes. Thank you, Premier. I'll hand those to you after this meeting, if that's perfect. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thanks. Chris, I appreciate it.
Appreciate you addressing Julie directly to start this off. We all need to continue to work together despite our differences. We're all on this committee. There's five of us. We're all going to have different opinions. That's always going to be the case. During meetings, we, I think, I think you know, like you mentioned, we talk, we all have to remain professional all the time during our meetings. The personal attacks can't, and I know you know, I know you know what's wrong. Personal attacks can't be tolerated and violates policy. I do, I appreciate you starting off, you're saying with that. Everything else, you stuck away from personal attacks, so I do appreciate that. And that's all I have to say on this matter at that time, at this time. Does anybody else like to speak before we move into the rest of the agenda or offer anything? All right, so we're going to move on. The reading and approval of records for the meeting on January 3. I do have one thing in reviewing that I think I need to have amended. It's on page two, and it's where we talk about making the motion for Ms. Baldner's appeal. So it says, "Mr. Coyle asks for a motion to support the superintendent's decision to keep the book, 'This Book is Gay,' on the high school side of the library." I actually asked for a motion to support Ms. Baldner's appeal to reverse Mr. Schaefer's decision. The rest of it is yes, because a yes vote would be supporting Ms. Baldner's appeal, and a no vote opposed it, and everything else there is correct. But that sentence, I believe, needs to say, "A motion to support Ms. Baldner's appeal of Peter's decision."
Got it.
I don't know if anybody else has anything to...
Nice sketch.
No, sorry, I missed that.
Nice sketch. I missed it too.
That's all I have. I'm good to make a motion to approve these as amended? If anybody liked a second, or if anybody wants more time, just let me know.
I'll second.
All in favor of the minutes as amended? Aye?
Aye.
Everybody good? The next up is reported by Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. I know Dr. Basta wasn't feeling well, so he's not here, so I'll take the lead on it. First up is Social Studies of Business Department, Mr. Jason Scott.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak for the school committee. So I'm Jason Scott, the history teacher at the high school, and also the Social Studies and Business Department head. I'm going to take you through some of our strengths and some of the things we've been working on over the past year and this current school year, give you some data from our AP scores, and I'll be happy to answer any other questions that you have as well. So obviously, I didn't go through a ton of our major strengths, because I think I've been over this in the past, but we have a great department of veteran staff. We have one of the broadest offerings of electives that the high school offers, and so these are some great opportunities for students to get introductions into career fields down the road for them, areas of interest, and then just kind of passion topics that they're interested in. So those are some of the ongoing strengths of the department. These are our three main goals for this current school year. So I'll talk about each of them individually, but I'll just introduce them here. So updating our world history curriculum, incorporating high-quality performance assessments, and then accountability in students in the post-COVID era. So with our world history curriculum, this is a multi-year project that we started about a year and a half, two years ago. And this is intended to make our world history class thematic-based, so we'll have eight different themes as opposed to specific, like textbook chapters. And what this allows for is a more accurate approach to world history. As it is now, what we're teaching, it's more mostly focused in European history. And so this will give us a true world's history class. And also, by taking a thematic approach, it will allow students to dive into topics that they might be a little more interested in. So one of the examples is, a theme might be, or will be, what's the relationship between the rulers and the ruled? And so you can apply that to Asia, you can apply it to South America, you can apply it to Africa across different time periods. So the teachers are developing the curriculum to give students a foundation in each of the themes, and then each of those chapters will have a student-focused project where they have the autonomy to choose something that they're interested in, the way in which they'll present it. So this is something that, like I said, it's a multi-year project, and we're working on that together collaboratively on our Wave Week Wednesdays, as well as professional developments throughout the year when we have department time. And so, once that's finished up, this will be fully implemented. As is now, about 25% to 33% of the school year is already acting, or is already using these themes and topics. So we've implemented them, and it's, I guess, to use the analogy of like, we're fixing the plane and flying it at the same time. So, but that gets the students access to this sooner than later, instead of waiting for it all to be done. The next thing is, we are looking forward to taking the lead as one of the departments focusing on high-quality performance assessments, which is a major goal of our vision of the graduate from the ASSE. We felt that we were uniquely positioned to take the lead on this or to be one of the earlier departments, you know, investigating this and implementing this in our curriculum, because we do a lot of these things already. We already have a lot of project-based learning. And what this allows us to do is to take the, maybe take a few less tests and quizzes and focus more on projects that students can, again, choose their direction. So one example of this would be, again, in our world history class, we looked at a genocide project. And so students learned about what genocides are, and then they had the choice to take a look at a genocide of their choice and present that to the class, and then do a tour of all of their pages. So this would be in place of a traditional chapter test or something like that. So this is an example of students kind of showing what they know, what they're able to do beyond just a test-taking environment. So this is in line with our MIASS goals, and again, hopefully, we're able to, you know, take the lead and be one of the earlier departments incorporating these things into our curriculum. And then this, so I think it goes without saying, this is not an original idea, but post-COVID, many students have learning gaps and challenges that remain. One of the things that we're focusing on as a department is accountability for students. We think this is a major area for improvement in students in a post-COVID learning environment. Given that the unique needs of the COVID environment require us to be a lot more flexible and creative with the way that we approached assessment and the way we approached deadlines, the, you know, as we come back to normal, those are things that we're looking to reincorporate back into our classroom and bring that accountability up. As a department member likes to say, "Nobody rises to low expectations." So this is where we're trying to get back to. This is some of our AP data. So this is our data over the past five years in AP US History. I'll give a minute so you can process the data if you'd like. Some of the things I'll highlight would be the high number of students taking the courses typically, and then also the room for improvement in terms of our average scores.
Mr. Scott, can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
While it's on the screen, it just makes it easier.
Yeah.
For 2020, was that test, was it administered, I guess, the time, when was that test administered in 2020?
It was administered on time, essentially, but that was a take-home modified version of the test. So that test was unique from all the rest of the test. It was not the same test that they would have gotten in person.
Can you just forgive me? On time, I don't know what on time.
Oh, May, early May.
Thank you.
Sorry. So we did that, but they did it entirely from home, because all learning was at home. One thing that doesn't show up in this data for all of our AP data is, last year, 2022, all of the tests was written, handwritten. We've put in an application and been granted the ability to do our tests digitally this year. A lot of the students reported that they hadn't written by hand much, if anything, never mind for three hours, over the last year and a half, two years. And so, when it got to that, that was a challenge for them. And so, it's one of those things that we can hopefully position our students to perform best by taking the computer, or taking the test on a computer this year. So we'll see if that makes a difference, or if that's more of an anecdote, but we'll see. Also, to address the, I happen to be the AP US History teacher, so one of the things to address and try to bring our average scores up is I've modified the curriculum to be a more thematic approach from the timeline-consistent approach in the past. So this allows us to cover, we teach US History over two years, and so a lot of the students were reporting that when they got material on the early 17, 1800s, they hadn't studied that for almost two years. And so that's difficult for them when they're going back for sophomore year material. This allows me to cover 1607 to present day seven times, start the course three years for them. So we'll see if that helps. AP European History data, really strong scores last year from this group. 100% earning three or better. This is a little bit of how we're recruiting students. So teacher recommendation, in our sophomore year, the top students are recommended for AP US History. AP European History is more, it's a true elective. We don't have a senior requirement for a full-year history class. So anybody that wants to take it as a senior, it's essentially a full-year elective. So we obviously recommend students that we think might be interested, but it's truly more of an elective. It is open enrollment, so any student in the school can take AP History, AP US History, or AP European History. We don't have any barriers to entry. If a student wants to take the class, they can take the class. Then the, yeah, so teachers will review their department offerings so that the student's course selection is accurate to what they want to take. And then next year, we are in the process of offering, or beginning to offer, AP Psychology as a new senior elective AP class for next year as well. Here is some data from our business department. Again, take a look through the data as it goes over to 22, 23.
How come the drop, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So we hear a lot about people wanting things for like personal finance-type course. What do you attribute, is there anything to attribute the drop to from last year to this year?
It's hard to say. Anything is going to be anecdotal. My main impression is that being a junior-senior class, if a lot of juniors took it as part of the 77, then there would just be less seniors that would need to or be interested in taking it.
Okay.
We also have a pretty thriving school store course and some other business offerings that seniors might choose to take that as well. Again, that's anecdotal. I don't have...
Yeah, no, no, I understand this information, though. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. The data is down a little bit for this year in general for business offerings, but that's, this is where we're at for the data. And then just to reference, early May this year, 2023, all seniors will be, all seniors will be given the opportunity to participate in the Credit for Life program, which we've offered many years in the past. And usually, 90-plus percent of the seniors choose to participate in this. It's open to all seniors. It's a fun, great, community-driven, and future-focused event for seniors. So that's the information that I have in the presentation. Again, like I said, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Yeah?
Right. Going back to the AP US History data, what do you think is the change? Is it COVID? I mean, the scores were so much higher here and nationally in 2018. Did the test change? Did the curriculum change?
So the test has been consistent since 2015, when they redesigned it. They've kind of been tweaking certain aspects as they go, but the basic test has been the same. It's hard to say, you know, in a, one of the challenges, and AP has been pushing open enrollment for nationwide for districts, and so it's a bit of a give-and-take in the sense that, you know, when, do we want to be, have more gatekeeping and keep out students that might not be as successful on the test? Or do we want to provide them the opportunity to get the benefit of the class, and then kind of the scores be what they are? You know, my personal philosophy is that I don't want to teach my class 180 days of test prep for performance. I'd rather get them prepared to be successful in the college classroom. So to a certain degree, it's up to the individual students to decide, you know, what commitment they want to put into test prep. But that said, you know, the scores are obviously not where we want them to be, so that's why I'm making some tweaks in the curriculum this year and my type of instruction and preparation, and then we'll see where they are. A lot of the data shows that taking the class, just taking the class, regardless of how you do on the exam, tends to have a higher prediction of success in college over your freshman year and then over graduation rates than scores on the actual test. So I stand by the program itself, but obviously, this is significant room for improvement. So we don't want to shout away from that.
Could we go through the slides? I just have a couple of comments on a few of them, if you bring it back to a new normal.
Yeah.
So just a couple of things. I am thrilled about the thematic global approach, the more global coverage. I know that teachers teach best when they're passionate about what they can teach and have the freedom to make some choices. So I love that you're shifting a little bit more out of the textbook and into pulling in authentic materials. Just wondering about the projects. I know that we said that less is more, but projects can be tough when working in groups. I'm just wondering about the grading. Do they share a grade, or are students each given their own grade? Because it's tough when, we all know that when you put students in a group, there are some that do the work and some that don't. So when you're being graded on only a few projects...
Sure.
Has the department developed rubrics that are individual and not group based?
Yeah, absolutely. So a couple of answers and thoughts on this. The most of the projects are individual and independent. So because that's, that's obviously a difficult dynamic of I am the high achiever in the group and I'm dragging the other person along by the coattails. We, we don't want to obviously have that. And there are, there are ways you can do that with reflections and other aspects after of, you know, weighting things differently. So, but that said, most of the projects are intended to be one student per project that's getting the grade for the work that they produce. And then in terms of rubrics, there is no one size fits all rubric truly for it. So the approach is more, if the assignment itself, it's more skills driven. So if there's a certain skill that we're working on with a theme or a unit, a rubric can be developed for that skill. Or what I've used in the past with some of these things is one of the aspects of the project could be each individual student needs to create their own rubric to go with the project so that the rubric can focus on what they're doing. So there is no one true answer that I can give to your question. It's more, we try to be as creative and as possible to give the students the ability to, to be successful and to have the work or the grade represent the quality of what they produce.
On that same slide, it's the, when you mentioned the deadlines, 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 thinking about the real world skills that they need. And I love that. And then just the accountability for their work or lack thereof. So I just, I like knowing that we're taking that into consideration with group work if they're doing that. And I love, I'm looking forward to future discussions about some consequences for that appropriate classroom behavior. So that's kind of been one.
Yes, I'm open.
Thorn in our sides. And I think it's really important that we continue that conversation. Will you go to the next slide?
Yeah.
I just have two more little comments. I think just my comment from a classroom teacher is that last year felt like rock bottom. And so thinking about those AP scores, I'm hoping it's just onwards and upwards from there. So that wasn't super surprising to me. And then the AP Euro slide, just wondering, a lot of schools have moved away from AP Euro to AP World. And given that we're kind of shifting that way in thought philosophy for the history department, would we be considering making a move away from AP Euro to AP World?
Yeah, I think typically a lot of our AP electives, the Euro and psychology tend to be driven more by what our staff skills and interests are. And so we have a really skilled and passionate AP European history teacher.
Which is super important.
Yes, and I think that's really, you know, I don't have anybody beating down my door to teach AP World.
Yeah.
And then it also becomes a question of oversaturation. If you run too many, then we have to make, like, we can't run everything that we'd always want to run. So AP Euro, it's a niche class to begin with, as you can see by the numbers. And but it's for the kids to take it and they're successful in the class, it's really great opportunity for them. So I, we certainly would be open to looking at AP World or transitioning that direction if that was something staff or students were calling for.
If they're getting enough of it in the other classes, then that's great if we're making that shift. And then my last, just on the business department enrollment slide, just putting a plug out there, I would still love to see personal finance as a graduation requirement. So if, if we can still continue the conversation on that. I know that there are many schools that are, that are doing that. So just continuing to push for that. So, thank you.
Hi, Jim.
Of course.
Thanks, Rita. So a couple of things, what roughly, what are we looking at as far as the percentage of students who are taking the APs, who go on to actually take the exams?
In AP US, it's a hundred percent typically every year. So pretty much everybody that takes the class takes the exam. There'll be one or two exceptions a year depending on various factors that usually come up towards the exam. AP US history is usually, they're juniors, they're the senioritis thing hasn't really kicked in. So and the argument is, you know, they, they've been taking the class all year. What do you have to lose really essentially is the argument for that test. AP Euro tends to see a handful of students choose to not take the test, mainly because they either, they were just passionate about the class and not like your typical AP student. And so they just wanted to be there to learn the material and have the experience and either never planned to take the test or realized pretty quickly that I like the class, I like the material, but the test is going to be a really hard experience for me. And so they, they opted out. So that's, I'd say, it's hard to give an exact number, but if we look at the numbers here, I believe there were three or four students in the class last year that opted out of the exam in 19, when I think there were five students that took the class. And so that would have been a hundred percent of the students that took the class.
I only, I merely ask simply, I recognize the fact that fewer and fewer colleges are actually giving the credit for even the best of test taking. So I'm wondering how many students are just now taking our AP courses more as a kind of a college preparedness as to, as opposed to getting ready for the specific test, if that makes sense? Two other things, one, it sounds like you go back to your students a lot for feedback on what you've taught versus how they tested. So I think that's great. Thank you for, for taking the time to talk to the students because that's kind of where your best information is.
Certainly.
But you talked about flying the plane while you're fixing it. Are you seeing a different tactic? Are you seeing a different level of, I guess, personal investment in what the students are getting based on how you're changing it up?
Yeah, so the, we piloted the genocide unit at the end of the school year last year. Now, from a educational standpoint, like June is not exactly the best, like experimental time in terms of how committed students are to what's going on. But the general consensus was that students enjoyed it. They liked having the ability to pick something that they were interested in. Like any project, when you have 150, 160 kids in a grade, there's going to be kids that excel. There's going to be kids that don't, and then a lot of kids somewhere in between. And so the students appreciated a lot of the aspects of that and they looked forward to trying that in other areas. So to give an answer or to answer your question specifically, it seems like students are, are enjoying it. I guess it would depend on who you asked.
Any questions, Mr. Scott? Thank you very much, Mr. Scott. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. I actually just want to let you know that I've heard tremendous things about Mr. Scott, not just from my daughter, but from others that take his class. And you know, what he said with speaking with students and, you know, letting them know that they're heard, I think is really important and I think you're an excellent teacher. So, thank you for having me.
Next up in the science, engineering and technology department, Ms. Nicole Corbett.
All right, good evening. My name is Nicole Corbett and I am the department head for science grade seven through 12. And tonight I'm going to be providing an update for the science department. I want to thank the committee for having me this evening. So first, I wanted to address some of the department's areas of growth that were brought up during the 2022 update. The first was the need to create additional AP science specific electives to better prepare students to meet the vision of the graduate expectations. So we created an environmental AP science class. This class is senior only, and I will explain that at the end of the presentation as to why. And an anatomy and physiology level two class, this is a junior senior class. Second was to develop strategies and lessons that increase student understanding of scientific applications by exposing students to more scientific data, terminology and diagrams to connect to real world science issues with possible impacts and relative solutions. So students are engaging now in more hands-on demonstrations and labs across all classes. During COVID and hybrid learning, we were not allowed to do labs per GESI guidelines. So we have brought back all our labs and students are doing labs in every single class. Some classes are participating in projects that will be tying classroom learning to the Edmonton community as well. So stay tuned for the end of the year. We have kind of a cool project in AP Enviro I'm excited about. So we also need to better align instruction with areas of scientific need based on student performance and results data. We are currently using MCAS data for grade seven through 12 to identify areas of need and working to develop lessons that reinforce information students struggle to grasp. We need to build on our ability to support English language learners more effectively in the sciences. All of our classes, they've had this before, but they have translated assignments and classroom materials that are provided to EL students. And assignments often have accommodations based on students' WHEEDLE level, which allows them to build on their English language skills as they complete the assignment. And this year, the EL department has also provided EL tutors in classes where there are several EL students. And that has been a big asset to our classes that have a high number of EL students as well. And finally, we need to identify best practices among the staff that allow increased student understanding and performance in areas of assessment where the best possible answer requires several possible answers. So we are working with upperclassmen on independent assignments that require multi-part analyses. We are working with AP students on multiple choice questions that could have more than one answer or no answer at all. And these types of questions reflect questions they would see on an AP exam, but also if they were to take a science class in college, many of the larger exams they would take would have similar style questions. And we are currently working with freshmen and sophomores using programs like Edelastic for answering multi-answer, multiple choice and open response questions. These are very similar to the questions they would be seeing on the next gen science MCAS.
Can I ask a question before we move on to the slide before that? You were talking about using the MCAS data.
Yes.
What are the materials that you're going to use to target those reinforcement lessons? Is this something that we have in the curriculum or is this going to be?
Yeah, so we have been doing this for a while where we do practice MCAS questions a lot. But this Edelastic program that we've been using this year has specifically the questions that are going to be on the test are very similar style. So getting students more prepared by using those online questions where they have to drag and drop where they have to use kind of some more technology skills to answer the questions. So we're preparing them in that way as well. And then in addition, we are using pre-existing curriculum materials to help them answer questions more in depth and have a better understanding of not just the baseline knowledge, but the more in-depth knowledge as to why certain things are happening. Students are very good at getting things on a base level, but then it's the why and trying to bring that back around. And I think everything we do in our curriculum overall really helps to reinforce that as well. Okay, so some department strengths, we're a very collaborative department. We communicate frequently to maintain a degree of consistency across all of our subject areas. Each department member is a specialist in their own area. That's what makes science a bit unique is that we have a biology specialist, chemistry specialist, a physics specialist. But we work closely to share resources and information pertaining to best practices, student supports, student performance in classes and effective activities, learning platforms and resources. We have an experienced department. Department teachers are experienced educators and or come from a variety of backgrounds, including those in the science, technology and medical fields. And we have an engaging department. Students strive to create lessons that incorporate hands-on activities, laboratory exercises and the use of online learning platforms like BISMO. So some areas of growth we want to focus on over the coming year. One is ease of access to materials, and I'm going to elaborate on each of these incoming slides. But we want to centralize effective lesson resources to make them more accessible to our staff. The middle to high school transition, we want to better prepare students for the transition to middle, from middle school to high school, both academically and socially. And building critical thinking skills. We want to expand on existing and incorporate opportunities for students to apply knowledge, analyze data and draw their own meaningful conclusions. So in terms of areas one and two of growth, so area one, ease of access to materials. We are creating SharePoint folders to share materials between classes. One thing that we did notice this year is we have a lot of materials in the department, but those materials are in all different forms. We have them in physical forms, we have them stored on Canvas, we have them in email. And we had a decent turnover of staff this year. We had two new hires. And trying to corral information and materials from past teachers who retired and they were on Canvas and they were physical forms and they're in file cabinets. We're trying to take everything and put it into SharePoint, which already existed. So we're gradually compiling more folders where we're going to have a catalog of materials there. But then teachers can each customize their own classes with the materials we have available. And then they can also add their own materials to kind of the shared database. We have, and just on the, in addition to kind of that centralizing of information, we have requested an online learning platform with a virtual textbook and supplemental learning material called Sabas Realize and put that in the 2023, 2024 budget. And the reason we did this is what we've noticed during budget is a lot of our textbooks, if we're to order in the future, textbooks in print are becoming obsolete. And if we're trying to look ahead to the future and maybe stay ahead of the trend of all the textbooks ending up online, we're probably going to have to start shifting a lot online as well. So this platform is from the publisher of our biology book. So therefore we'd be able to put the biology book online first. And that way we have the book with all the materials for the book. And it's another way just to centralize resources. So that way it's more easier to access the resources for both students and staff. In regards to area two, in that middle to high school transition, we are looking to, for more middle, high school collaboration regarding student performance and expectations. As many of us have noticed, student attitude towards learning seems to shift in middle school a bit. And we want to, early on, set high expectations at this level despite that shift in ideology amongst our middle school students. And we want to prepare them for rigorous science classes. And we want them to realize that once they go into ninth grade, the MCAS test that they take is in biology, which is the first science class they're going to be taking in high school. So we want to prepare them early on that to really just be ready for high school and taking rigorous science classes. We have been working more with computer-based MCAS style questions for practice. And this is at both middle and high school level as well. In regards to the third area of growth, which was applying, building on critical thinking skills, we are creating more rigorous laboratory assignments that have students apply their knowledge to in-class learning and create their own analyses. So we are creating more, we are creating more opportunities for students to write lab reports where they have to follow the outline of an experiment based on the current unit and develop a report that has some or all of the following components. An introduction that has some background information and a properly formatted hypothesis. A procedure that has an outline of the experiment and just the right amount of info so that somebody reading your lab report could replicate your experiment, but not so superfluous that it bogs down the procedure. A data section where you have properly formatted data based on the lab you just completed. An analysis of data section that explains what the data means using proper vocab. And as students advance in grade level, these analysis sections should become more complex. And a conclusion section where you reflect upon your experiment, decide whether or not your hypothesis was supported or rejected and highlight the relevance of the experiment. Why was this experiment important? Why did it tie back to your learning? Additionally, we're trying to model some of the policies and expectations of introductory level science classes for, of introductory college level science classes for AP and honors juniors and seniors. So differentiated instruction already exists amongst our AP level one and level two classes. However, and this is based on the depth of material and how we present it here to the students. However, once students make it to junior and senior year, many of the students in our AP and honors classes are looking to move on to a college education upon graduation. And many of them look to into the science field and have an interest in the science field. What we want to do is to give them a taste of what some of the science classes in college may look like. And some of these college science classes are fast paced. They do long assessments. They have weekly labs and they really involve strong time management skills due to the volume of material covered and the pace of the class. So if you have a science class or you're a science major, you're going to have two labs a week that are four hour periods with lab reports. So what we're trying to do is kind of give students an idea of this is what's going to, college is going to be like. So we are trying to open the door for more opportunities for longer exams. And we're also trying to teach students to effectively manage and budget their time and prioritize the current assignments in front of them. Well, we're seeing a lot of the students kind of holding on to assignments for extended periods of time. And we want them, when that happens, the lab is already cast, you forgot what the lab was about. And we want you to really focus on what's in front of you. And the other thing we want students to realize, especially in these honors and AP classes, is that it is okay to make mistakes in science. Science is about making mistakes and we wouldn't have science without mistakes. So we want students to be comfortable making mistakes in class. It is okay if you didn't. It is okay if you didn't do something right the first time. However, you're learning, and we want to encourage the fact that you're going to make mistakes in the process of learning, and that is okay. All right, so in terms of addressing the vision of the graduate, one of the aspects was critical thinker and engaged participant. We have laboratory activities and accompanying reports and handouts, as well as long-response questions on exams. And this allows students to seek knowledge, reason through and weigh evidence before making a decision, and construct an argument and form a conclusion. In regards to socially competent and contributor and self-aware individual, we have collaborative assignments that allow students to work with their peers and solve problems and enable them to successfully navigate social situations and prioritize and manage time effectively. We also have online platforms like Gizmos that allow students to use technology to enhance learning for themselves and others. Socially competent contributor and self-aware individual, we are working on laboratory exercises and analyzing data and drawing conclusions from labs to model data sets that allow students to prioritize and manage time effectively and to take intellectual risks. And these are our AP numbers. This is just from AP Biology, which was the only science AP we offered through 2022. And our average score in 2022, I'll just let this sit up there, was slightly higher than the global average, and eighty-one percent of our students scored a three or higher, which was pretty significantly above the global average. So our AP Bio students do do well, and most of them do take the exam in AP Biology. And how our AP classes are advertised? AP classes are offered indirect, are often indirectly advertised to freshmen and sophomores. As students can see and hear about activities these classes are working on, based on classroom setups. So a lot of our classrooms are shared lab spaces. So they may see, oh, the AP Bio class was doing a dissection today. Oh, that's cool, I want to do that in the future. Other class activities and via word of mouth. We have one-on-one discussions with students in the spring of sophomore year about AP offerings and if the class is a good match for them based on academic interests, future plans, and current science performance. And we, last year, our AP Environmental Science class overfilled. It was almost double the capacity that we were able to offer. So that's why we had to only offer it to seniors last year. And so it was quite a popular class. And Chris, I believe this was a separate question you had last time about the eighth-grade MCAS data.
Very possible.
So I can end it here, and then I can present that little part right after if anyone has any questions on the presentation itself.
I have one more.
Go ahead.
Is that all right? Thanks. I love, I'm looking at the areas of growth, areas two and three. The rigorous lab of science, I love the use of the term rigor, everything else. I know that some of these expectations that you're looking at geared towards the, you have written here, introductory college-level science classes. I'm also wondering, at all levels, or, I don't know how to phrase this without sun. Do we have real-world applications for the students who don't necessarily see themselves as possibly going to college, either for educational or financial purposes? Because some of our students get into the real world, and then that, that becomes another step several years down the road. So just wondering, how are we applying this for all of our students?
Yes, so we do have application-based learning in all of our science classes. So I just highlighted that as an area of growth because we're seeing a lot of potential for areas of growth with our honors and AP kids in terms of just trying to get them ready for that transition. So that's just one of the things that we saw as being kind of, one of our things we want to improve on. But in terms across all classes, yes, we have application-based science in all of our classes, and all the classes do hands-on activities. They all have a taste of what this field is like. So biology, they're all doing different lab sciences and hands-on activities, and Gizmos, chemistry, the same deal. Physics, we do the same labs in honors physics and Level 2 physics. So they do the same different activity, just differentiated instruction on how that's presented. I'm only speaking physics, so I teach the physics class.
No, it's okay.
And then the eight, Environmental Science classes actually all do very similar activities as well with the same exact test kits. So yes, we do the same, pretty much the same types of lab activities in all of these classes. It's just the way it's presented, and then the final product that we expect out of students.
Thank you.
I have a question. So on, at the, addressing areas of growth, areas two and three. It says working more with computer-based MCAS-style questions for practice.
Yes.
So I'm wondering, what's the percentage of the classroom time that's being used to like teach to that test?
Not a lot.
No, okay.
We're very content-focused for the MCAS, but we need to show students what this is going to look like beforehand. So this is what this test looks like, just for practice, especially when you get some of those tricky questions with the way they're set up with the next-gen MCAS, where you may have students that go through that really fast. We want them to see the platform beforehand and be comfortable working with that.
Thank you. And then what is the assessment or the program that you use?
We have EdElastic, but EdElastic has the MCAS uploaded to it. So last year's MCAS practice test is uploaded, as well as the ones back through, I believe, 2019, 2018. So that way, there's a lot, there's a question back we can utilize from that.
Thank you. And then just one other question on the socially competent contributor, self-aware individual. What's the percentage of the social, it says successfully navigate social situations? What does that mean?
I believe that was last year's area of growth, or this year's? Oh, yep. There we go.
Addressing the vision of the graduate, it's under that one.
Okay, so socially competent, contributing, self-aware individual, right here? Yes. I believe that was from, directly quoted from the vision of the graduate. So I just pulled the quotes from our different, yeah, aspects of the vision of the graduate.
Okay. So what, then what's the percentage of students only assignments versus collaborative assignments? Like, do you, do they do a lot on their own, or is it mixed, or?
What we do is, for our lab assignments or lab assessments, then students are, do collaborate on the lab part because we have to share the materials. We don't have twenty-five setups or thirty setups, so it'd end up being too timely, time-consuming as well on that end. Then they each have to break off and do their own evaluation of the lab assignment. So whether that is you have a lab packet, or whether that you have to make your own lab report. So then you break off and do your own.
Excellent, thank you.
Yep.
I was, I was, the only thing I wrote down was going to add, I, so the collaboration, when you mentioned the collaboration between high school and middle school, is that staff you're referring to, like staff working together?
Yes.
I mean, I, and I hope it goes without saying, like, it's great that, I hope it's happening everywhere across the board, across the district, between school to school, grades to grades, so thank you for calling that, I appreciate it.
No problem. Okay, so Chris, I believe last time you just wanted a comparison with the fifth and eighth, about class of 2026 data, and you asked to bring it back.
Okay.
So you wanted a comparison of how they did in fifth grade versus how they did in eighth grade. And so there was a drop-off in the comparison between those who scored. We have two different grading scales up here, scoring scales. So they use the old-style scoring scale for the fifth grade, and then they use the new-style scoring scale for the eighth grade. So in fifth grade, those who scored proficient or higher was higher in, when they were in fifth grade. Then in eighth grade, it's going to switch to meeting expectations and higher.
Do the numbers mess around between those probably, right?
Yeah, it's not a direct correlation on the scale.
Okay, that can explain a lot of it, too. All right, thank you, Nicole.
No problem.
Can I actually ask you a question about that? So when, when should we expect to see the year that like grade five will match with grade eight as far as, you know, the old expectations with the new?
That should be, I believe, this coming. I believe, so that test rolled out to the younger grades already, and then it just rolled out to the high school this year. So, I'm trying to do the math in my head really quickly, so.
I'm not a girl.
Yeah, I believe it's, I believe this, so this is, I believe this year.
This year, so next year when you come back, we should?
I believe, yeah. I will double-check that for you, though.
Thank you.
This year's grade eight, grade five was their COVID year, when we stopped school in 2020. So might not, right?
This year's.
This year's eighth-grade students, I don't think they took the MCAS.
Yeah, so it might be the next one, okay. The next-gen test should be out across all grades at this point, though.
I don't know that, because my son's in seventh and happening fourth, so I'd add one to one.
Yeah, and they made it a little bit confusing with all the, they didn't shift everything at the same exact time. So there was, it was phased out to different grades at different times.
Does anybody else have anything? Thank you, Ms. Corbett, I appreciate it.
I have one, thank you.
Next, Mr. Jonathan Born with some proposed revisions for the high school program of studies. Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me here today. As most of you know, this time of year, we present proposed changes to the program of studies to the school committee for approval. These proposed revisions have been passed by the Abington High School Council on January seventeen, 2023. Actually, segueing a little bit from what Ms. Corbett was mentioning, the first change will be to update our language in the program of studies to reflect what is on the MASSEDSE website for determining or creating the competency determination for a student to graduate each of the tests. And basically, what you're looking at is a shifting scale that accounts for the phasing out of the legacy scores. So that would be the old set of scores into the new or MCAS 2.0 scores. So you can see the class of twenty-four, class of twenty-five will have the following competency determination. Marks, the asterisk below is kind of interesting to note. And basically, what it says is that for those two graduating classes, so current juniors and sophomores, if they received a needs improvement on their biology, they still may have met the competency determination until the state phases in the full MCAS 2.0 science competency determination for the classes of twenty-six to twenty-thirty, which goes on to the next page. And I believe at that point, Mr. Coyle and others, that will be the full. Everyone is using that second MCAS, of course, till or unless they change the line on that. But for right now, that would be the plan. Again, this is language pulled directly from DESI, and we just put it in a program of studies as a reference for families. The next change we'd like to propose is, currently, we offer or have language for offering a withdraw-pass and a withdraw-fail designation in our program of studies. We are recommending to simply make that a withdraw-only. We are not able to award credit, or it kind of confuses our credit granting system to have a withdraw-pass. The computer just reads that you withdrew. The incidence number of this at the school is minimal, maybe one or two kids per academic year. And most schools, when they look at sending schools, receiving schools, look at the transcript, see the W, and don't really differentiate between the two. I believe the history of this was to just denote whether the student, how they were performing at that point in time that they needed to withdraw. And just anecdotally, what I'd like to share with the counseling staff, too, we go through great pains to support a student in that class to hopefully not be in a position where they have to withdraw. To do that, we try to support them through other means and grading options that we have available before a student does need to withdraw a class.
What is the timeline that a student is in a class before, like if they drop? What is the time?
Yeah, there isn't, it's a great question. There isn't really a hard and fast, but we do say, once you're in past a point, which I believe is about two weeks to a month, we say you're it. So there is an add-drop period. Naturally, once we crest into the second semester, student circumstances are such that they may need to withdraw, but we really try to get them to finish up the year as best as possible. And it's hard to say like when this happens, we offer or we counsel a student to withdraw a class because the options are just so varied and splintered and depends on each circumstance. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Next would be some of the new course offerings we're hoping to add to our program of studies. The first would be engineering, design, and development. This would be something added to the math program, kind of in adjunct or computer sciences. The precursor to some basic robotics and STEM work. We have a new staff member who's eager and excited, and as we know, that thematic to what we heard from Mr. Scott and Ms. Corbett, that can be driving a factor in some of these classes. So he's very excited to offer this. Just for a full disclosure for folks, I know we have a lot of high school parents in here, we will list this class and see what the student interest is. And what that may do then is make, have us make a decision between two electives related to computer science. But it all depends on where the kids go and where their numbers go. But this is something that should appear on students' course selection sheets. The second would be senior math class. Some seniors do get to senior year and do need to take a fourth year of math. And pre-calculus or calculus options are not a match for, either their math performance levels or their post-high school goals. Or quantitative literacy is also not a match for what they're looking for. So the senior math does allow them to meet their senior-year graduation math requirement. We do acquire four years of math, and it is able to select a targeted group of students on here. Our school council caught the line and just explained if you see students looking to go into a STEM field in colleges, it is a college prep class. Most colleges that are seeking students for engineering or engineering-type paths recommend calculus or pre-calculus at a minimum, even to the point that they would dissuade students from taking statistics. So this is just to be clear for students that are seeking engineering to make sure they have spoken to potential receiving schools, to make sure they're meeting the requirements. In the social studies, as Mr. Scott mentioned, we're looking to add an advanced placement section of psychology. This will likely replace the elective psychology semesters, although there's a possibility that we may be able to do both depending on some of the other movement with AP Euro. It is likely that we would be an AP Psych or AP Euro on-off cycle depending on interest. So it may be possible that kids might migrate from Euro to Psych. My past experience in other high schools is AP Psychology is one of the most hotly sought-after advanced placement courses. So I think it's important for the community and the community to know. What we anticipate happening is having to turn kids away from being able to take advanced placement psychology, which is not what we ever wanted to. And I think for also to know, there's not someone looking at a list saying yes, no. This is where we have the benefit of letting a computer make a choice for us at random. But depending on the level of interest in that, there may be some possibility to expand sections there down the road. Next is a little piece of housekeeping, but we felt important to do. And this is just to help streamline our scheduling and put students in supported classrooms with special educators who can best help them. What we aim to do this year was to put our ninth graders that have an academic support class as part of their IEP in a class-first period. The rationale being that kids walk in the door if they have any missing assignment or missing work. We help them get that work done so that they are able to go to classes prepared for success. What we weren't able to do was to keep our ninth and tenth grade classes separate. There's not a big problem, it just means that teacher then has to liaise with a ninth and tenth grade English teacher for each kid, and get a little busy. So this is just a way of us hopefully putting the ninth graders in one classroom with the T V to help streamline that communication and support. So we would just change course numbers, basically take what is nine-ten, split them on nine, ten, same course description, and then keep academic support eleven-twelve. The last two additions, I believe I foreshadowed to this group before. We're now looking to add these to the program of studies. These will be listed in the program of studies, being able to offer them to students. This kind of runs concurrent with the budget process. As we've, you may know, we've already asked for a language teacher at the high school to teach Portuguese. Clearly, we need an educator who is skilled and certified to, to offer these, but we felt imprudent at this time to put these course descriptions forward. As this group may know, we currently only offer Spanish. And for some students, we want to be able to give them the option of a second language. We feel it's important to minimally be able to promise students that if they start Portuguese 1, that they're able to take Portuguese 2 to meet their two-year high school language requirement. And frankly, after that, we are not sure, we'll have to see what the numbers and vitality of the Portuguese piece would be. But it could come to pass they were adding in a Portuguese 3 or 4, depending, but that's, we're not even there yet. So this would likely be a case where we have two seconds of Portuguese 1 to see what the availability is. And that is to give our students kind of an off-ramp or another option than Spanish. Not to mention, Portuguese is a growing language in the Abington community for many of our students. So this gives either some of those students an opportunity to have an academic setting where they're able to flex their muscles, so to speak. And for many of our English language learners that are Portuguese speakers, developing their literacy, reading, writing, speaking in their native language helps them learn English as well. So it kind of hits multiple areas that we hope to do. And so that's why we have Portuguese 1 and Portuguese 2 in the program of studies. As I said, this may be, pending your approval, in the program of studies, but may be not available to students pending the budget piece. So I just wanted to be clear with the community about that. Any questions on the program of studies?
I have a few, that's okay. I'll start at the beginning, but engineering, design, and development. I know you said that depending on enrollment, one computer science class might run, one might not. Are some of the components of this class that the person is excited about teaching, should not enough students sign up, or one runs, the other doesn't? Are some of the components, would they be able to be incorporated into the other course?
It's a good question. So I think some of the coding work that might not happen, for example, we have a web development class that, that I don't think would be a carryover to, and class that I don't think would be a carryover to, and that has had kind of varying levels of interest on that. So it will, we will let the student request numbers kind of dictate which way that goes. But there is some components of coding in here to program some of these devices. So there would be some exposure to coding.
Senior math backslash financial literacy. Just spun that up there again. And the Portuguese in the course description, it says this course is designed for students who are beginning to learn Portuguese. So that would have to be very clear that it is non-native speakers who are beginning to learn Portuguese or, or at least clarified that some heritage speakers would be able to take the class based on their skill, on their written skills, that gets a little messy. So just from experience with language, that who's going to take that class, having both in the same class is both a benefit and is also problematic at the same time.
Sir, yes, thank you.
The language for that, the students who are beginning to learn Portuguese, just tidying up who would take that class.
Thank you.
You answered my question regarding Portuguese and the budget. We were there. And then regarding back to the senior math, I guess it's just more of, and it might have been was, so without senior math and like what were the options for children, for students to take, the ones that you mentioned, like this could be in place of some of those for them?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, so many seniors will take a pre-calculus class. Some might take quantitative literacy. So this is to create another, there's also AP Calc. This is just to create another, correct, another option.
Yep. All right, that makes sense. Thank you.
I do have one question, just on the academic support, just since you said it out loud. Is this something that's written into an IEP or is this for anyone, any of those students who have an IEP? Just curious because that way if people are wondering.
That's a great question. So most of our students that are on IEPs have an academic support as part of their service delivery, but not all. And then we do have some students that are not on IEPs, but we determine would benefit from this support.
Oh, so if someone is on a monitor?
Five or four perhaps, or just we determine early in the pre-referral process that the student might benefit from this, then.
And so nothing in the separation of the two grade levels is going to affect cooperating?
Yes, no, actually it increases the, hopefully the availability of these offerings, yeah.
Okay, so first I want to just say the engineering, design and development, I think that is an awesome course, anything having to do with engineering and getting our students focused on that, I think is great. I love Danielle's idea with the senior math and adding a little personal finance to that. I think that actually is really great and some of these kids might, you know, really benefit from the financial, personal financial interest. And then the psychology, I love that we're going to do, or hopefully advanced placement, but so psychology, what we have right now, is that a virtual high school?
Good question. So we offer through virtual high school, AP Psychology through VHS, through virtual high school.
Right.
What we offer in-person here are two back-to-back semesters of elective psychology. So like semester one, semester two, it's the same thing, both semesters. As it stands right now, this would replace that semester elective and also obviate the need for kids to take VHS, say AP Psych, and would be steered to the in-person, which I think, based on many, many experiences, the in-person experience far exceeds virtual high school.
Absolutely. That's great. That happens. Thank you.
Can I piggybacking off of that then, would that open up then a potential other virtual high school opportunity for a different course if there were some things?
Yeah, so we subscribe, take seats and it dead opens up the entire virtual high school catalog to us. And AP Psychology through VHS is typically one of our highest enrollments and five or six students in that, which doesn't sound like a lot, but then that's, yeah, when we have 40 seats for a year, 20 per semester, that's a substantial number of spots.
Okay.
Mr. Born, the table grades for the MCAS score, those are straight from the state, right?
Correct, yeah. And just for coming up here, the educational proficiency plan is linked, that is actually still very similar language to what has been in place for students with, that require educational proficiency plan. So basically the, the scores on the left column, if you hit a debt score or above, you would not need an educational proficiency plan, but if you're in the needs improvement category, you would. And that typically requires a fourth year of that class. We currently have a four-year English and math requirement anyhow. But you can see for the science, it does require passing the science exam. There's no other option.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Go ahead, Ellie.
As far as adding a senior math class, I think that is a really good idea because I know personally, it was like for me and a few of my friends, like we needed another option for math, like it's kind of like a gap. And even like when I tried to move math classes, I had to change my schedule because there wasn't like a class that really fit like what I was trying to change.
Yes, thank you. And I'll pass that along to Ms. Doherty and some of your other friends in math.
Sorry, my fault.
Just on an aside, I just want this committee to know, we hear personal finance things, so we'll let you don't see it here. We definitely have our wheels turning about the best way to do that. So lots of different ways, whether it's a course or graduation requirement, we hear that and we're thinking, we're trying to figure out what we can do. So I anticipate, or we definitely invite a conversation about how we went to do some of those critical learning for our kiddos before they leave.
If nobody else has anything else, I'll be looking, or we don't want, a motion to approve the revisions to Abington High School program of studies for the 2023-2024 school year as presented by Mr. Born.
I'll make the motion.
Just a second.
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. You got one more?
Yes, I do. So the next item is a little bit more informational, but happy to talk about this. So in December, we received an email from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges that we have been awarded continued accreditation, which we expected and anticipated. I believe the last time I spoke to this committee about the NEAS processes, we were awarded accreditation and one of the foundational elements had not been met with curriculum. Since that time, we have met that foundation element. So I'd like to thank Dr. Basta and the work of my department heads and directors to make sure we have met that foundational element. So what comes next for us is basically the ongoing NEAS process is you'll probably see me back in a few short weeks with my school improvement plan. The school improvement plan becomes the continuation and the driver of the NEAS process. So we will, as an Abington High School, School Council, dive back into the NEAS report to look at some of the priority areas. We'll identify some of those priority areas in the school improvement plan and that will, that's how they will get memorialized in our school improvement plan. School improvement plans get sent to me asking a three-year report that'll be in October of '24. They will see our progress on those areas and others to determine, again, continued accreditation. This is new for many schools since they've changed their standards. I've remained very close to the folks at the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, having gone to accreditation visits myself, so pretty familiar with what they look for and ask for. So just wanted to share that good news, that we are a continuity accreditation. So you'll hear a vision of graduate about a gazillion more times from me on this podium, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Born.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. Next, you called Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you. So in keeping with some of the theme you've heard tonight about raising expectations, both academic accountability and behavioral expectations for our students, those weren't plants, by the way, in those presentations. They're something that we're, we're trying to do K through 12. We don't just start in high school, kids don't, they're not born at the end of their eighth grade year and come to high school. They come to us as in preschool and kindergarten and we work with them all the way through with, with both of those. And so you've got my goals here and that's the theme you're going to see in my goals. I sent the committee a copy of this a week or two ago. I'm interested in feedback that people want to give me. I won't read this to you, but I'll just give you a high level overview of it and then, you know, wait for your questions or comments and move as quickly as the committee decides on this. These goals focus on raising achievement, resiliency and grit for all students. The gaps that we're experiencing though are dependent on the experience of the individual during the pandemic. So some of our students, you know, have minimal or gaps that are probably hard to even find. And then others have larger gaps. So what we need to do, because we service all kids in the public schools and try to meet individual needs, is support all those students in improving both with academics and behavior accountability. And so you heard tonight about time management, you heard tonight about assignments, you heard tonight about assessments. We're going to continue with that, with that theme. For example, I think the best example we heard that really shows the entire spectrum is with the AP tests. And we have a group here tonight, so just if you're not, if you're watching a cable and you came here at this, we're a busy and active and a vibrant school, well into the evening, the lights are on, there's a lot going on. So with the AP tests, so we want to raise the expectations by having more students take AP classes. At the same time, we want to raise our AP scores. As we raise our, as we try to raise our AP score, we know that if we're having students who don't traditionally take the AP tech, uh, class, take AP, those scores may not improve as much as we want because we've got students that we pushed to hopefully to take that class because we want to raise the expectation for all students. So this talks about MCAS scores because I can report to the community on MCAS scores. It's not all about MCAS scores. Having said that, from the previous presentation, you know that this district's MCAS scores are better on average than this MCAS scores across the state of Massachusetts. We know our math scores are weak, especially middle school. So you're going to hear in other committee meetings, what we're doing about that, what we're doing to make up for that. Although this just talks about the number of students meet or exceed expectations in MCAS in ELA, in science and math by 5%, there are other things that are going to be, have been, will and are going and will continue to belong. When we're talking about target social, emotional and mental health improvement goals, you'll see, you'll, you see specifically in this, you know, the implementation strategy that requires students to take more personal responsibility for their learning and their behavior. And so those are like we talked about tonight, meeting deadlines, longer-term assignments, study skills, and continuing, continuing to push the expectations for students. So like I said, I didn't want to read this to the committee, had a copy of it, a copy of this. Although this does outline MCAS, it's not just about MCAS, it's just the one baseline that I can use across MCAS tested subject areas. So, if you have any questions, comments?
Danielle, anything you'd like to?
I, I have two, just two comments.
Yeah, go ahead.
You had mentioned that the isolation and disconnection caused by the previous two years of the COVID pandemic has created a range of gaps. And I just wanted to acknowledge a hundred percent agree and just add to that, that the gaps are also coming from overexposure to technology, social media and societal changes. And you mentioned that, you know, students need to take more personal responsibility for their learning and behavior. And I just want to keep putting it out there that we need parent support for that to happen. And the, what, what we can do as a school committee and as administrators, teachers only go so far. And we just need, we need to have that conversation with parents at home if we're really going to see these great goals achieved.
Agreed. We'll be more productive working collaboratively with families than in isolation.
So while I understand, like I understand that, so I guess first I want to say, I don't love the reference to MCAS because, and I, so I'm glad that you kind of clarified that. And I understand why it probably has to be there because it's difficult to have a quantitative measure elsewhere. I just, like I, I think it is important that we make sure that it's not the only thing that's out there. And like personally, I'll, I could probably use more subjective stuff to prove that we're growing if we didn't increase by 5%. Like I, I understand, like, and I, I get it, there has to be, I mean, I have a job too. We all have, like, there's certain quantitative measures, there's a certain way you can get there. So I just feel like I had to kind of get that out there because while we all may have differing opinions on the state's rationale for the MCAS, particularly its 10th grade graduation requirement, that's nothing we can fix as this board here for the town of Abington. It is something I want to make sure that it's not the sole focus of everything. So that's kind of, while I understand why it's there for a goal perspective, for the reality of actually putting together the goals and improving the district, I just don't want it to be a focus, so.
So I appreciate you said that because I agree with you. And so I feel out of a sense of diligence to the community and the committee though, I, like you said, I have to give you something that's measurable. And if I don't do that, I'm shorting you and the community and the kids I serve. It's, but it's not about, it's not about that test for me. It's not about that one measure, but that's the one way I can.
Yeah.
And these are actually progressive. So I, I come back and, you know, I, I hope, you know, it goes up by 50%.
I guess I'm okay saying on record that I understand why it has to be there, but at the same time, it's not like, the kind of what I said, like I, I get why it has to be there, but if it didn't, I'd be okay too. We had other ways. I just, I, I know it's one surefire piece of numbers that can help measure that, so.
So to acknowledge that, when I come, you know, we come back with a report on, on growth, it'll be more than MCAS.
Okay.
Because I agree with that.
May I, I think what you're saying is if we had a different metric, we'd love to use it.
Yes.
Unfortunately, this is the metric we have, but I also think, forgive me if I say, I feel like the thought train behind this is I know that we've had lots of discussions, even particularly with the math department. If we're seeing the increase in the test scores, as much as we all have feelings about them, it does mean that we are putting out a more viable learning experience. If they're performing better, it means that we are creating possibly a better educational experience. So even though that's the metric we have to use, even if we don't love the test itself, there might be evidence there that what the kids are getting is a little more robust, a little more comprehensive and more in keeping with what we are trying to achieve for them.
Yeah. Okay.
I think the, appreciate that. I think the example, the AP score again is the best example. If we could have more students taking AP classes, that's a good measure. That's a positive. We want more students and the access to higher expectations and having that experience. That doesn't necessarily mean that the scores are going to rise to the extent that we want because they're two competing measures.
No, in sense.
But, so I believe that, you know, I want, I want, I'm going to come back with measurable items like that. But that example though, just isn't as clear as this.
No, I understand. Again, I get why it's there, I just more wanted to voice, I guess, other parts of it, that's all.
Agreed.
Anybody else have anything?
I just have one more comment. I appreciate that, at least for this year, that there aren't any more district measures or initiatives and it gives teachers time to work on initiatives that were already put forward, so. Thank you for that.
So I'm okay, I'm like, I think based on having the active discussion, I'm okay to make a motion to accept Superintendent Schaefer's goals for 2023 as presented and based on our discussion, if anybody would like to second.
Yeah, I can second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. So new business and establishment next school committee meeting, February 28, 2023 at 7:00 PM here in the auditorium, here in the library, sorry. In some of the informational items, there was that, one thing I did want to call out on Thursday, Katie Greer, internet safety expert, through funding of Abington Education Foundation and Abington Copes, will present, will present a, Danielle, correct me if I'm wrong here, but it's internet safety for kids in the building, grades five through 12 during the day on Thursday. And then that evening at 7:00 PM in the auditorium, which is why I said that, she will present to any parents, it's being funded by AEF and Abington Copes, it's free of charge to any parent that wants to come. So 7:00 PM in the auditorium here to see Katie Greer speak. I know I've seen posts about it online. If there hasn't been a constant contact, I'm sure there hasn't, I can send another reminder of it. So that's Thursday night, January 26, which is two days from now. So I did want to call that out in the informational items.
Can we, we talk about two more additional items, just for informational, that's why? Well, Aston, how that was brought into play for like parents, the portal, yeah, the portal. Maybe some parents didn't see that. Is there a way that you can just speak on that very briefly, just to let them know to look for their emails at least, you know what I mean?
In terms of access?
Yes.
Check your emails for information for what grades go when you.
Well, it's high school.
High school.
It's high school.
High school only.
Email went out to explain that it was, the change was coming, and then a follow-up email should have gone to all high school. I think it was, they said the first, the primary contact and the second contact, giving them the login to be able to get onto their child's Alpin account a little more easily. Yes.
Mr. Born, we got it?
I can see what you're there.
You're just fact-checked.
Sorry. Would you like to, I can stop doing your job.
Thank you for reading the emails. That's exactly what it is.
And then just one other thing, that there's a college info coming up, I think it's February 2nd, Thursday at 7 o'clock in the high school for any, I think it's junior parents. There's information on colleges financially.
Okay, great. So at, while we're hitting on dates, I'm just going to continue with dates right now. I already mentioned Thursday night. Friday is, Friday is a half-day in-service early release day for students, professional development for staff. Wednesday, February 8th, Abington Education Foundation Board of Directors meeting at Abington Town Hall at 7:00 PM. Friday, February 17th is an in-service early release day. Oh, Friday, February vacation, nice timing. Monday, February 20th, President's Day, all school offices, buildings are closed, and that starts the winter vacation, great February vacation. I'm going to go back right now, as some of you have probably know, probably saw, earlier this month, I accepted a resignation letter from Mr. Schaefer for the purpose of retirement effective on June 30th, 2024, so the end of next school year. So there's still 17 months left. With it being here, though, I think I'd be remiss to not just acknowledge the fact, thank you for everything you have done and will continue to do, I know, for the next 17 months. As we've talked, every, all of your decisions, in my opinion, are for the benefit of every child here and what's best in their interest. You've helped us navigate through multiple tragedies, a pandemic, and more to still come, so I just want to thank you for that. Related to that, and I'll give everybody a chance in a second, I just want to get this out. So at our February meeting, we'll discuss potential options on replacements. Those options can involve a search, it can be done by outside firm if the school committee hires, mass association of school committees is an example. We can do a search ourselves. There's potential for internal replacements and internal search. Anything like that is for our discussion in February. That's kind of where I wanted to, I just want to let everybody know where our status was and we're going to go going forward. Anybody else like to add anything? Please feel free.
I echo everything that you said. I'm going to save all of my comments for 17 months from now. I'm going to enjoy the 17 months that we have. Very grateful for you and proud and honored to work alongside you.
I'm lucky. Thank you.
I am not capable of saying anything.
If we're all set, I'll be looking for, yeah, go ahead.
I wanted to just, the, as you had outlined, I appreciate that, the AEF and Abington Copes is providing this internet safety program. But can I just take a second and talk about other things that the AEF has done and the people that have brought that to us? A lot of people went to their most recent fundraiser, it was very successful, but I feel like I, I should talk just a little bit about the successes of the AEF because that's why people participate in those things and then the people that made that all possible and promised. I'll be very brief. Appreciate your patience. Nicole talked a little bit about a project that high school is doing about measuring PFASs in our local streams. That's a hands-on science piece provided to us that's exciting and beneficial, and that was provided by the Abington Education Foundation. We have a visiting artist who's a woodworker, who's going to be working with some of our students in our art classes and sculpting coming in, and that's also AEF. And then there's an enemy reading, watching, and review going on through our English department, also provided by the AEF. So I want to thank Rachel Collins here at McGrath, Jenna Callahan, Caroline Ellis, Marlene Stevens, Katie O'Neil, Annie Messina, Messia, sorry, thank you. Danielle Raptin as the liaison, and then Savannah Lozano as our student rep. Melissa Cook is Abington Copes, also part of the internet safety that you mentioned yourself. Thank you. Thank you also, Melissa Cook.
Can I just echo that as well, especially to Rachel, who is here? The work that they do is absolutely amazing. They pour their heart and soul into all of these events and fundraisers that they do to benefit all of the kids in Abington. And I, I wish everyone knew how much work they did, I do, from being there with them. And I am in awe of everything that they do and I'm very grateful and appreciative for everything that they do. All of the other members of the Abington Education Foundation, but Rachel is right there, so thank you.
And one of the nicest ways to show your gratitude and show your support for what they do is to show up if at all possible on Thursday. Bring a friend, bring a neighbor, bring a grandparent. The information is going to be important. It's valuable, and the way that we can assure as a town that we can provide more of these things for our families is to get our families to fill the roles. So if at all possible, please come out to attend.
With that, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion?
I will second.
All in favor? Aye. We'll see everybody in February. Thank you very much.